All right, next up we have a presentation from Quest. Mr. Warren?
Yes. Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here with you guys. Happy December. So I'm excited to have our couple members of our LEGO Robotics Team here tonight. So historically, my second year, we started dabbling with robotics as a club. And it wasn't until last year that we actually got to the place where Ms. Alonso joined us and we jumped into the LEGO League. So really exciting stuff. We have some parent volunteers that also help with the club. So Mr. Oyer is here, Mr. Place, and they're always there after school helping. But it's really led by Ms. Alonso. And this evening, we have two students who are going to share, A.D. and Parker. They're really excited. So they're going to present first, and then they're going to ask you to kind of gather around the display. One rule: just don't touch anything. I was observing the practice, and I learned you don't touch. Just look, put our eyes. So without further ado, please welcome our employees.
So this is Parker, Place, and A.D. and Oyer. And they worked so hard to prepare for tonight for you. They're going to be joining one challenge at the end that is sort of a piece of the 15 that we do as a club during our competition. So I'm really excited for them to show that to you. In addition, Michael Forsick helped out with that, but unfortunately he's sick today. So he played a big role in the presentation and preparation as well. So they're going to be great.
So the first LEGO League challenge is for ages four through, I mean, nine through 14. And it's a STEM program that introduces students to science, technology, and engineering, and math throughout Amazon Arena. And then they make a different theme each year. This year's theme is similar, which is like an ocean theme. And...
So this is kind of a good example of what they're tasked with and what they're trying to compete. So we're not going to show the whole day, but it's a snapshot.
If the coral reef is flipped up, not touching the mat. If a reef segment is standing upright outside of home and touching the mat. Mission four: scuba diver. Help the scuba diver transport new coral from the nursery to the reef. If the scuba diver is no longer touching the coral nursery. If the scuba diver is hanging on the coral reef support. Mission five: anglerfish. Scare the anglerfish back into its home within the sunken shipwreck. If the anglerfish is latched within the shipwreck. Mission six: raise the mast. Raise the mast to restore the sunken shipwreck and explore what's inside. If the shipwreck's mast is completely raised. Mission seven: Kraken's Treasure. Retrieve the chest of the shipwreck to recover a piece of our history. If the treasure chest is completely outside the kraken's nest. Mission eight: Artificial Habitat. Rearrange the artificial habitat stacks to create safe homes for sea creatures in this area. If an artificial habitat stack segment is completely flat and upright.
So what we scored on is our robot design, like the actual tasks, the innovation project, and the core values, which is like working together. And then the core values is teamwork, inclusion, impact, fun, discovery, and innovation. And then our innovation project is, so this year, we had to find a problem in the ocean. And what we're doing is invasive fish species. And then we have to try to find like a sum-up solution to invasive fish species. And yeah, and make like a little prototype of what we have to do for like our design or whatever such solutions. Oh, yeah, these are just some pictures of the team. So just a picture of the team. So are there any questions?
I do have one question. So the innovative challenge is about invasive species. Have you talked to, I know Quest has worked with Seneca Park Zoo, and there's also studies going on about is it invasive species in Lake Ontario? Have you like worked with local experts?
So actually, today, we had one of our meetings, and we just like centered down on that topic. Actually, we did that last meeting and started research on it, but we haven't met with anyone yet.
Okay. Chip.
No.
What are the different roles within the team?
Well, so we have the floor team, the engineers, and then you have the innovation team, and then you have the future board, which are just the future floor team. So the engineers built like the stable, built the LEGO pit, and then they're going to help the robot. And the floor team is like the actual people that are actually going to be like on the floor of the competition. And yeah, then the innovation team came up with the innovation project. And yeah. Usually if you're on the future floor, then you're on the different end of that.
What team are you on?
I'm on the floor team.
Who does the programming of the robots?
Yeah, I just program.
I don't.
So the engineers are the ones that build the robot? The floor team?
And then I'm the floor team. There's a few roles. There's like different roles on the floor team, and one of them is a builder, and they help the engineers with building the robot.
What platform do you use to code that?
Spike.
Oh, we have administrative reports. Dr. Casari.
All right, good evening. Great to see everyone this evening. Just to update you, as I have in writing, the State Education Department has launched a new regionalization initiative aimed to improving student opportunities and operational efficiencies through resource sharing across districts. Approved by the Board of Regents in September, this process will occur every 10 years starting this fall. The good news is this is something that Hilton has done for many years, and many districts in upstate New York have done so. The initiative prioritizes collaboration to expand access to advanced coursework, career, and tech education, and extracurricular programs, with a focus on community engagement and aligning plans with local needs. Declining enrollment in over 300 schools have been cited as a key driver. While the plan is mandatory for participating districts, further clarity is expected at the upcoming Board of Regents meeting regarding possible exemptions. So we have schools downstate that are very concerned about losing their identity and sharing resources, so there's much more of a movement downstate with concerns around this. Talking with our team here, certainly not see any foreseeable harm to the district. So I would be recommending that we hear what the Board of Regents have to say at their upcoming meeting, and then we would move forward with participating, as we've already looked at what's required and are doing a lot of the collaboration. So I just want to give you an update on that. I know that there are some boards of local school districts that are against this, and they are reaching out to other boards of education. So if someone were to reach out to you from a certain neighboring school district, I just wanted to give you that heads up.
This is where you do stuff like this, like through BOCs?
Absolutely, through BOCs.
Combined sports programs?
Combined sports programs. Perfect example is women's golf in Churchill Chillicothe. We do a lot with the village and the town. So there's a lot of collaboration happening with the work that we do here, some of the instructional program that we offer students as well. So we've expanded opportunities by some of these shared services and municipal agreements. So yeah, you're absolutely right. I also want to give a shout out, kudos to Quest Robotics Club and our high school musicians for their outstanding performance this evening. If you had an opportunity to attend any of our recent music concerts, winter concerts, as I just talked to Shane, the program coordinator, the other day, they are just, they're firemen on all pistons. They're really putting a nice show together. Very impressive on the continued growth of the music department. Very proud of that. And I do want to thank Kristin Plini as well, as a leader of instruction in the district, for making sure those things have happened. Adam with the finances, and then with recruitment of quality music instructors as well. So thank you to all of them, and just a great outstanding product. So if you get a chance over the next couple weeks, I know it's a real busy time, but check out some of the performances. You'll definitely be impressed. I also want to thank all of our staff for their dedication to keeping students engaged during the holiday season. I worked in districts before where the Netflix is rocking and rolling by the first week in December, and I can tell you that visiting classrooms along with my colleagues here at the table, students are engaged in meaningful learning. I think you saw some of that this evening. And certainly, we celebrate, and the kids have a good time, especially as we get closer to the recess. But we're not mailing any, and it's really a proud moment for the district. And finally, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Kwanzaa. And that's everything I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you. Ms. Plini.
Wanted to give you an update on our program evaluation process. As you know, we started an annual program evaluation process for our instructional programs. During this 24-25 school year, we're looking at K-12, ELA, and ART. Last week, our ELA program evaluation team had a chance to get back together and start to analyze the data that we identified during our summer workdays, and spent quite a bit of time steeped in quantitative data, and also reviewed the staff and the student survey data that we collected for ELA programs. We'll be getting back together in early January to take a look at the work that we've done thus far, with the ultimate goal to create recommendations and action steps for the next five years of the ELA program. When we return from break, we'll be conducting the ART staff and student surveys in focus groups at the elementary level to add the qualitative information to the data that we've been collecting for the ART program. They'll follow us in the process in January and February, and we will give a board report update later in the spring for both those program evaluations for this year, and then we'll pick off next year's departments in the summer. Grading practices 7 through 12, I gave you an update on that last time we met in November, but just wanted to follow up to let you know that our staff survey, Merk-Lamps High School Teachers, has been completed. Student survey will occur this Friday in advisement and activity set, and the family survey opened last Monday, December 2nd. That will close this Friday. We'll take a look at all of those survey results during our next grading ad hoc committee meeting in January, I think it's the 22nd. And then last update for you today is just around the New York State graduation measures, the recommendations that have been made to the Board of Regents. In early November, NICIN presented a timeline and plantation plan aimed at transforming graduation requirements in New York State, aligning those recommendations from the government commission, which has been working on this since 2019. This initiative is to promote greater equity in the educational system. There's a few key elements. There are four transformations. One is the adoption of the New York State warrant to graduate. One is the move to one diploma. One is the redefinition of credits to focus on proficiency. And the one that the news likes the most is the sunsetting of reading exams as a requirement for graduation. So this plan has a phased-in approach moving through different cohorts, and there is a focus on planning and professional development. Just a reminder that right now, while this remains under review, everything maintains the same for graduation requirements. And so the board has to approve any of these changes. So for now, we maintain status quo. We'll learn more about what that timeline and implementation looks like and how we translate that back to districts. As more information becomes available, I'd like to share that with you in a minute.
Any questions to Ms. Plini? All right, next up, Mr. Dale.
Well, Adam is preparing for budget season. I did want to leave him alone. The HR department is busy preparing for the upcoming budget season as well. Just wanted to let you know that we've been looking at enrollment, looking at a number of sections offered. I've been talking with Jeff Green about, of course, election process at the high school. We adjusted our timeline with Dr. Green just a bit, just to make sure that we can capture all the course requests, catch any students who may have missed. But also, over the course of the past two weeks, one of the pieces that we started when I started, was the fact that we would meet with principals and directors about new hires and also potential retirees that they may have heard about, that I may not know at this point. That has led to some great conversations about how important it is to go out and recruit as early as possible. Our new hires are doing just a great job. The reports that I've heard, I've seen many of them in classrooms, they are feeling very great about the support that they've been provided since joining Hilton, and I think kudos goes to their mentors, the instruction office. They just feel like they're in a great spot. Many of them have stopped me. But when it comes to the budget season, we're amping up just like everybody else. As I reminded people on the board about the Global Compliance Network, I wanted to let you know that our rate of completion is about the highest it's ever been, and that's a real testament to making some changes on our end so that people have the knowledge and could apply that knowledge in the assessments that we give. But I also want to let you know that we made one adjustment just recently when it comes to asbestos knowledge. Many of the buildings and grounds and the technology staff are required to learn about asbestos as they go into different portions of the building that are sometimes locked and not wanting to disrupt the asbestos. So that required training is now going to be offered on the GCN network. And so we will not be bringing someone in to complete that training in person, but rather completing it online through our GCN network. So that was a good adjustment. Again, about 70 individuals on our staff will be trained in the asbestos identification. And again, just making sure that it's handled properly, just because of the nature of the material that it is. And then lastly, I wanted to let you know that the open enrollment process where people that take health insurance with us have to complete that entire process. We eliminated kind of the middleman of school front this year, and people use Benefit Solver directly to confirm all of their children's independence in that program, and also select their benefit, the plan that they need for their family. One of the pieces that I'm proud to say is that we made several outreaches with rising costs in health insurance. We felt like we needed to be a good employer and make sure that people were well versed in the healthcare dollars that they're spending. So we did outreach with anyone who was in a high-cost plan. We provided kind of some options for them and showed them the comparisons from plan to plan. That resulted in some changes. It will be significant savings for the employees and also significant savings for the district. So I'm pleased to support people. One member of the staff said, "I just didn't know. When I joined the district, I said, 'Give me the best plan you have,' and that's what I wanted." And as we look at those plans now, she said, "I just need to make a different plan for my family. The costs are just so outrageous." And they weren't seeing the benefit. So again, I'm pleased to kind of support our employees, because again, as people first business, this is something that I think we need to take very seriously, that our employees are good consumers of their own healthcare dollars. So again, just wanted to update you on those three pieces, and I'm happy to answer any questions. No, no, nope. We're always willing to work with our staff and Board of Education. Just remember to submit those. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to help you.
All right, Mr. Bass.
Yes, budget presentations do start next month, so we will be into our budget season. I have a couple updates from you since the last time we met. The first is all of our state aid claim forms, which I said were submitted last time. We're still waiting for some feedback from the state. We've gotten through all of that. Now all of our files have been cleaned, so we are good to go, and we have all the information out there for the governor to use to create their budget, which will be released in January, and we get a first kind of glimpse at our state aid for the upcoming budget season. Second update I have for you is on the change that we made with our bus patrol system and some of the data that we received from that. We moved a bus stop that was on Henry Street. We did that just starting in this month in December, and so far, we've had zero instances of past buses. So that just goes to show some of the additional benefits that we received from that bus patrol system, where we're able to take some, look at some analytics, look to see where we have some problem areas, and then be able to make some adjustments to move forward. So that was some great news that came out of transportation. And then the last update I have for you is, I don't get out very often to, into the classrooms, but one of my favorite times is around this time of the year. I did get invited into a kindergarten classroom, got to put on my grand chaperon and my Christmas hat, and helped them make some Christmas cookies for the Christmas party. So it was a lot of fun. It was great to get out and see the kids in action. That's all I have for you.
All right, next up, we have public comments. We have one person tonight, Ms. Lovato. Would you like to come forward?
May Casey address the answers to those questions now in terms of, I mean, you did state that it's really a downstate issue in terms of combining districts, but there is no plan to have us fall under...
Yeah, I certainly can answer your question, which I think will answer the questions here tonight. So it is optional in the sense of how much collaboration you do. I can speak from experience, working in a small rural district about 15 years ago, and I was looking to broker a merger between two districts, one that I served as the superintendent of neighboring district. So we went through an entire process of looking at merging the districts, and it would have been lucrative for the taxpayers, it would have been lucrative for the students, in the sense that we'd be able to add programs and add staff, lower taxes. And that was shut down because during the meeting, there was a talk about, would we be the Wacken Knights, or would we be the Bees? And so I just share that story because there is, there's no, for this district and for at least the district's administration, there is no intent to merge any districts. It's an opportunity to have some shared services. So it's not about taking autonomy, it's not about taking opportunities away, it's actually about adding opportunities. At any point in time, as you read through the pages and pages of information, at any point, the district can say, "No, thank you, I'm not interested." Most likely, what's going to come out of the Board of Regents meeting is that opportunity, if you don't ever want to as a school district, collaborate under that structure. Without that already put in place by the Board of Regents, we've begun to collaborate with other districts. So I don't see it at all harming the district. I wouldn't advise the district to do anything that would put any opportunities for our students in jeopardy, anything to put our community in jeopardy with our identity. We are a very, for this part of the state, we are a very large, encompassing district. I think the goal of the Board of Regents is for those smaller districts, not to pick on Mr. Dale, but out of the central school districts, they continue to have dwindling enrollment. And where I served at Byer-Virgin, educated to the southern tier, some of those districts that are graduating 35 students, in the north country, the Adirondacks, I think that this legislation is really geared towards those 300 schools with dwindling enrollment. So I feel comfortable with the work that we're doing. I feel comfortable with the initiative. It wasn't news to me. It was, it was kind of like, I thought the Board of Regents was a little late to the game. So that's my assessment of it at this point in time. I know that I have updated you in writing about the plan as well, tried to give some summary to that, but at this point, I'm confident that there would be no loss of control of the district if the district moved forward participating. But if at a later point in time, the board came back and said, "You know what, Casey? I don't think this is for us," we can exit immediately if that was the choice.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, next up, we have approval of minutes, which is usually a pretty straightforward thing. So last meeting, we had four people that were incumbents, right? Tonight, we have five, only three that were at the last meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to table the approval of minutes until the next meeting, because we don't have enough to approve.
We don't have enough to approve?
We don't have a majority of the board, and we have three.
I don't understand.
Well, we only have an extension tonight, which would bring us down to, with the absence of the individuals from the last meeting, it would have to be at the meeting to approve the minutes.
So it's my understanding that if it's on the agenda and we have it available to us to view, you know, review those minutes, then you can make a vote. The people, whether you are present at that meeting or not. So you're saying people were abstaining because they were not at the meeting? So move to table.
Move to table. So I have a second, first by Ed, second by Nancy. All in favor? Next up, we have board member reports. All right. I, first. It's been a crazy couple of weeks, but I was able to attend a little bit of some boys' basketball, a little bit of National Honor Society. Casey and I attended the executive committee of Monroe County, where the topic that we were discussing a minute ago came up, so that's all I got.
I was able to attend Anna Green Gables, which is great. That's basketball, and I am looking forward to seeing some of the concerts coming up, especially North Flipp and Conover and everything, to see my son. But it's a great time of year to catch concerts if you're able to, so.
I don't have much. I haven't been back since our New York City trip, so I just wanted to give a shout out to our sources of strength. They did so amazing. We're super proud of them and very, very impressed. So it was a great, great conference. I learned a lot, some really nice resources for updating our board handbook and things like that, so.
First audit committee met this evening. Very straightforward meeting. Thank you to Adam, Jim, and the neighboring people presenting to the audit committee. You will see coming up at the January meeting, the documents and the audit report and the action plan for some items that was covered extensively within the audit committee. Thank you to Kristin for running the ELA program review. It was a full day with a lot of people investing their time and energy and thoughtfulness into creating a great review for that. It's really great. There's a lot of interesting feedback from the different stakeholders, and I look forward to it in January. I did, I was able to attend Anna Green Gables and the Quest concert. Always a great time. I agree with you, Stephanie, it's a great time of the year for these programs. District operations for the Monroe County School Boards Association was RG&E and NYSERTA talking about the electric bus, school bus initiative. It was very well-intended. There was a lot of information, um, and there was a lot of good conversation between districts on, on, you know, what the program needs for us here in Monroe County and how to physically leverage grants and, um, other money to accomplish this. And then also the conversation around if your community does not support it and it goes down in a budget vote, what do you do? And, and we're bringing those questions to our legislators. Um, in fact, um, just this past Monday, yesterday, um, we hosted a, the representatives from legislative offices to explain kind of some of our positions and what we're looking at. And this will be one topic that we brought up at the legislative breakfast. Um, we're just trying to inform them at this point. I think that's it. Um, a lot of the budget committees have reached out to board members to sign up a lot of meetings in January. And then, um, off of what Kaylee had talked about with NISBA. So we were able to upload, and I don't know if I've talked about this before, um, into Board Docs is a whole section with all the presentations that we could get from NISBA, so.
Is that under featured or is it in the library? Library?
In the library. Um, and so in January, programming for Monroe County School Boards Association, we're gonna have, um, a rep from Department of Labor talking about the Teacher Investor Program, which is, um, something popular on the site. And then hopefully, we're going to have a, uh, business official talk about the Rockefeller Report. Oh, and I just wanted to say, um, I'm so impressed with the reports that our directors and principals are making to us monthly. There's so much information in there, and I know I had a lot of questions. Thank you all for your answers. Um, but it's so impressive, the amount of work that is going in at every level, every department. And that outcome is our students are doing well, doing successfully, so thank you.
Um, I was able to attend National Honor Society induction, several supporting events, Anna Green Gables, uh, and the Northwood Corus concert, so a lot of stuff happened.
Uh, I have one, I have one thing to add. I, because I missed last meeting. I was, I attended the first grading committee meeting, uh, Ms. Kliney ran it. That was very impressive, very, everybody that you could think was there. There were kids from higher ed, from high school, it was through the high school. It was, it was, it was good. And I've said it was a good time. I love talking about grading. It was kind of nervy of me. But, uh, it was great to hear it from kids. It was, it was just, I think overall, everybody left with, it was a great experience. Uh, we helped build the survey that we're gonna be using, and then we'll be reviewing it in another person here. So I think that committee is off to a great start. All right, next up, we have new business consent with two addendums. We have a personnel addendum, uh, and then we have the addendum from Mr. Geis about the grid approval, the bid approval for phase one of the $37.2 million capital project. So consent with the addendums goes all the way up through K. The motion versus approve the consent portion with the addendums. Nancy, you have a second?
Second.
Ed, any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right, next up, we have new business discussion. Uh, we have the approval of Dr. Casari's amendment to his contract. So we are amending the contract. Uh, after the turn of the year, we will be, uh, receiving a brand-new clean contract. So for, just to speed things up, we're doing the addendum, and then we will follow up with a permanent clean contract. Apps of confidence. The motion to approve the addendum to Dr. Casari's contract. All right, you have a second? We're all waving our hands at each other. So I have five people motion first. So pick any two names if you want.
I have a thought, Nancy. All right.
So, uh, Kaylee and Nancy. And then any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. We were just all so excited to approve your contract. We all went first.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate you. Thank you.